Good evening. Before we start with the board meeting, I'd like to call up Lydia Cheney, an eighth grader at J.B. Morton, who will lead us in the prayer. Lydia, will you please come to the podium? This student has a few things about her I'd like to announce before she gets started. Lydia's in the Beta Club, the band, the honor roll, and she was the Student of the Year, nominee from J.B. Morton, so we want to congratulate her on that and thank her for reaching the door to J.B. Morton. Thank you, Lydia. And now you may begin.
Dear Heavenly Father, I come to you this meeting asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. I want to start by thanking you for everyone that is here tonight, as well as for keeping all of our board members healthy and safe. I pray that you protect and watch over not only our school board, but our students, schools, and staff members. I pray that you guide our board members throughout their decision-making process, as well as give them wisdom to make the right decisions and best decisions for our schools. In God's name I pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everlasting justice for all.
Lydia, again, we'd like to thank you and wish you well this coming school year. I know it's kind of different than probably everybody's been expecting or looking at for the last, since March of last year, but we will get through this, and we'll be better on the back end of it. So we want to wish all our students besides Lydia a successful school year. Thank you. Mr. Nakane, thank you for the pledge. At this time, I'd like to call a St. Charles Parish School Board meeting to order. Let the record show that all school board members are present, except Mrs. Belinda Benard. The first item on the agenda tonight is Resolutions in Memory of Ms. Lorraine Delk. And I'd like to ask Mr. Alexander if he would read that, please?
I'd be delighted if I can open it up. Wait, wait, I can't, I can't get it on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas Ms. Lorraine Delk served as a schoolteacher for thirty-seven years in St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein express to the family of the late Ms. Lorraine Delk its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Delk's family, and I move approval of this resolution.
Ms. Alice?
I have a motion.
At this time, I'd like to ask any members of Ms. Delk's family, please go to the podium.
Moved it. Who's second?
Second.
Mr. Nakane's seconding, all in. Well, please vote. It was there. Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't see it. Thanks. that one. Since Ms. Dufresne was a family member. Whereas Ms. Clarabelle Dufresne served as a school bus operator for thirty-three and a half years in St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein express to the family of the late Clarabelle Dufresne its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Dufresne's family.
Move approval. I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mr. Nakane, and we approve this resolution. That motion passes unanimously. Someone from Ms. Dufresne's family, please come forward. he would read that resolution.
I'd be delighted, Mr. Chairman. Resolution in memory of Ms. Harriet Young. Whereas Ms. Harriet Young served as a schoolteacher for six years in St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Harriet Young its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Young's family, and I move approval of this resolution.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Nakane, and we approve this resolution. That motion carries unanimously, and there's no one here from Ms. Young's family, so we'll move on to the next item. This is a resolution in memory of Mr. Emile Robinson. I'd like to ask Mr. Nakane if he would read that, please.
On behalf of you, Mr. President. Resolution in memory of Mr. Emile Robertson. Whereas Mr. Emile Robertson served as a school custodian for five years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Emile Robertson its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Robertson's family, and I move approval of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nakane, seconded by Mr. Suffering, that we approve this resolution. That motion passes unanimously. Do we have anyone from Ms. Robinson's family? The next item on the agenda is two point zero six, Louisiana Education Diagnostician Month Proclamation. I'd like to ask Mr. Suffering if he would read that, please.
It'd be my pleasure, Mr. President. Louisiana Educational Diagnosticians' Month Proclamation. Whereas children have a natural design propensity to learn, and it is imperative to adequately support the needs of children and youth, and whereas children have a right to high-quality education that meets their individual needs, and whereas children's mental health is closely linked to their successful learning and development, and schools must apply sound psychological principles to instruction and learning, cultivate children's intellectual, social, and emotional development, and promote prevention and early intervention, and whereas schools must ensure a safe, healthy environment for all children, and be able to recognize and respond to their emotional, psychological, diagnostic needs, including those caused by a crisis, and whereas educational diagnosticians are specially trained to help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, create effective caring schools, access helpful community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to foster healthy child development and academic success. And whereas during Louisiana Educational Diagnosticians' Month, we recognize the vital role that educational diagnosticians play in the personal and academic development of Louisiana's children. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, hereby proclaim October 2020 as Louisiana Educational Diagnosticians' Month in St. Charles Parish Public Schools, and I move for approval of this proclamation.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Suffering, second by Mr. Oakland, that we approve the Louisiana Education Diagnosticians' Month Proclamation. Any discussion? Is it up?
It's unanimous.
Okay, it's unanimous. And I accidentally knocked myself out of line. The next item on the agenda is United Way Proclamation Month, and I'd like to ask Mr. Ord Oakland if he would read that, please.
I'd be honored. Whereas October first, two thousand and twenty, United Way of St. Charles will officially begin its annual campaign to raise funds to meet vital health and human service needs for St. Charles Parish, and whereas the mission of this organization is to advance with member agencies the Health and Human Service Agenda of St. Charles Parish by expanding resources and applying them effectively to meet community needs, and whereas hundreds of volunteers have come together each year in St. Charles Parish to participate in raising the needed funds through their annual campaign, and whereas these funds are used to touch the lives of thousands of people through such programs as disaster relief, rehabilitation, and counseling for the mentally and physically disabled, and special programs for the youth and elderly, and whereas widespread public support of the human service organizations funded by United Way of St. Charles makes St. Charles Parish a better place for all its citizens, and whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board wishes to join the great people of St. Charles Parish to live united, to care about continuing to improve our quality of life by supporting the United Way of St. Charles Parish. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, do hereby proclaim the month of October as United Way Month in the St. Charles Parish Public School System. I move adoption.
Second.
It's been moved, Mr. Oakland, second by Mr. Robichaud, that we accept the United Way Month Proclamation. That motion passes unanimously, and we have Ms. Casey Kernan of United Way of St. Charles to bring some readings to us. Casey?
We'd normally be here, obviously, talking about battle for the paddle, and of course this year, that's going to be a little bit different, but I'd just like to take this moment to say thank you to the board, to the staff, to the school system for continued partnership. I know these last six months have shifted it and changed it, but expanded it, and so I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you on behalf of our staff and our board for all that you do for our community and for all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. United Way of St. Charles Parish.
Thank you.
Item two point zero eight is the National School Lunch Week Proclamation. I'd like to ask Mr. Smith if he would read that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy. While we have to. National School Lunch Week Proclamation. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over sixty years through advanced practices and nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child-feeding programs, and there is evidence that continued need for nutrition education and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, proclaim the week of October twelve through sixteen, two thousand and twenty, as the dates to observe National School Lunch Week, and we encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutrition habits in hope of achieving a more healthful citizen today and today's and the future. I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Suffering, that we accept the National Lunch School Week Proclamation. Let the record show that motion passes. Thank you. The next item is two point zero nine, the National School Bus Safety Week Proclamation. I'd like to ask Mr. Jay Robichaud to read that, please.
It'd be my pleasure. As a matter of fact, it should, it could possibly say National School Board Safety Year after what we've been through the last few months. Whereas St. Charles Parish School Bus Operators are a vital part of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, traveling more than one point five million miles each year as they transport more than eight thousand students each day to and from school in school sanctioned activities, and whereas St. Charles Parish School Bus Operators are committed to professional development and training to improve their knowledge and skills and to comprehensive program of public awareness, continuing education, and advocacy for better traffic and road conditions as a way to ensure the safety and well-being of students and other drivers who share the district's roadways with school buses, and whereas more than two hundred transportation department employees, including operators, dispatchers, trainers, technicians, and support staff involved in the transportation program, have compiled an outstanding safety record in Louisiana, and whereas the week of October nineteenth through twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, is National School Bus Safety Week throughout the nation in recognition of the contribution operators and other school transportation staff make to the nation's public education system. It is fitting that we set aside a special time to commend these dedicated employees. Now therefore be it resolved, the St. Charles Parish School Board supports the goals and ideals of National School Board, National School Bus Safety Week, and encourages all citizens to recognize St. Charles Parish School Bus Operators and support staff for the services they provide. I move approval.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mr. Oakland, that we approve this resolution. And before we vote, I'd like to ask, call on the superintendent to make a few words on behalf of our bus transportation.
Sure. I'd like to first echo what Mr. Robichaud said from the standpoint of when we talk about Bus Safety Week, that certainly has been a priority for us this school year, really since the beginning of the school year, and our bus operators and our entire transportation department have operated on such a high level of efficiency, dedication, and commitment to our school system. They directly contributed to our reopening success and continue to contribute on a daily basis to our excellence as a school system. Their dedication and commitment is sincerely appreciated. Their hard work and effort does not go unnoticed. So I'd like to thank them personally. We would, as a board, like to thank them personally because this has probably been one of the most challenging years. It's also been an opportunistic one as well, but this success could not have happened thus far without their dedication and commitment. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Item three point zero is a recognition of board and superintendent.
Students. Hanville High School student scored a superior rating at the International Thespian Festival, Employees. Central Office employee received a $25,000 grant from Chevron North America Exploration and Production Company for the purchase of pandemic-related materials and equipment, Central Office employee received a $15,000 grant from Chevron and the New Orleans Saints to advance STEM programming through Project Lead the Way, Ronnie Seal. And here with us tonight, we have representatives from both Chevron and the New Orleans Saints for a check presentation.
At this time, we'll take about a two-minute recess for those people who would like this opportunity to leave, and then we'll continue the board meeting in two minutes. Thank you very much. I'd like to call this meeting back into session. Item number four is a business item of the school board. Four point zero one is the minutes of the August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty committee meeting and the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty regular board meeting.
Move approval. Second.
Jay.
Jay? Oh, okay, I thought it came from that here. It's been moved by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mr. Nakane, that we approve the minutes of the August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty committee meetings and August nineteenth regular board meeting. Please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Item four point zero two is the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school session calendar revision proposals. Due to the impending threats of Hurricane Laura, Marco, and Sally, schools and the school board office were closed seven days during the first quarter of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year. Modifications to the calendar currently approved, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school session calendar are needed in order to recoup lost instructional minutes and for the high school students to meet the minimum instructional minutes required to earn Carnegie units. This item is reviewed at the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee meeting of the board on Monday, September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty, and is aligned with goal A of the board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve option one of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school session calendar revision proposals. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nakane, seconded by Mr. Suffering, that we approve option one of the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school session calendar revision proposals. I'd like to turn this over to the superintendent to give us an explanation, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Savoy. As you mentioned, we did lose seven full instructional days due to those hurricanes as a safety precaution. Therefore, we considered four options. Therefore, we considered four options to the school session calendar. We also considered what would be least impactful for our stakeholders, including our employees and families. In order to do that, in, in addition to recouping the required instructional minutes for, for high school credit, we are recommending Option 1 to the board, which includes extending the fall semester of the current school year into January. So that, whereas it would have ended December, December 18th, we are extending it to January. We would like to extend it to January 7th. We're also recommending that January 4th, which was originally a student holiday, whereas employee, it would have been a professional learning day, to make that a full instructional day for our employees and no longer a student holiday, as well as change the fall midterm and final exam days to full instructional days, thereby recouping the required instructional minutes for our high schools to earn credit for their courses, as well as adding additional instructional minutes for our middle and elementary schools. Mr. President.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any discussion from the board or comments?
Mr. Savoy, I just want to commend the superintendent and whatever committee worked on this for, including a copy of the calendar and the explanation side by side. Made it very easy for board members to be able to look at a glance and see what the changes were and what the changes were in relationship to what the dates previously were.
There being no other discussion, please cast your vote. No technical difficulty, but the secretary says it's passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 4.02 to 2000, oh, I'm sorry. 4.03 is the selection of the school board liability insurance program. To, to approve the renewal of the general liability insurance package, Berkeley Insurance Company Aviation Liability with member companies of Global Aerospace and Cyber Liability with Zurich from Arthur J. Gallagher, without renewing excess, we do this without the excess reviewing liability coverage. Recommend at the cost of $463,270. Can I get a motion?
So move?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Nakand, seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we approve the, the renewal of the general liability insurance package with Berkeley Insurance Company.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robichaud, this is your committee. Thanks.
Mr. President, they did have some questions in our committee about attempting to get a three-year quote on the cyber liability. I don't know if, Mr. Nakand, you asked a question, but they, they can't get it.
Right.
It can't be offered. So I just wanted you to know that.
I, I did, I did see the memo, Mr. Robichaud, and I appreciate Mr. Kane checking, checking into that for us.
So we won't need Mr. Kane to come to the podium there?
No.
I saw, I saw the memo come through. So thank you, Mr. Kane, for doing that for us. Thank you, sir. So no other discussion, please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 4.04, the renewal of the Medicare Advantage Plan from Humana. On September 1, 2008, retirees with Medicare will offer the option of continuing traditional Medicare while converting to a private fee for service plan offered by Humana. Currently, 599 out of 772 eligible retirees have chosen to switch to the Medicare Advantage Plan. This is an increase of 9.2% participation from the prior year. Humana submitted a renewal for January 1, 2021, that continues existing coverage at a 2.5% rate decrease and a premium credit from 2020, resulting in an estimated annual decrease of $87,115. By offering the Medicare Advantage Plan, the district gives retirees an alternative to traditional Medicare while decreasing the district's costs for health insurance. This item was reviewed at the Risk Management and Insurance Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, 2020, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move approval to renew the Medicare Advantage Plan from Humana at a cost of $2,596,018.
I'll second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we approve the renewal of the Medicare Advantage Plan from Humana. Any discussion from the board? Superintendent, any comments and staff? No discussion, please cast your vote. That motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is 4.05 Personnel Items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, 2020, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan. There's no recommendation from the superintendent, so can I get a motion from the committee?
Move approval?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Nakand and seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we approve Personnel Items as presented to the board. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your vote. That motion carries unanimously. 4.06 is Job Description Revision. The superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the board. The St. Charles Parish Public School Director of Special Education requires special education certification. Since the state does not require this certification, a revision to the job description is being recommended in order to attract additional candidates for this position. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, 2020, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the job description revision for the Director of Special Education position.
It's been moved by Mr. Suffering.
I'll second.
Second amendment by Mr. Nakand, that we approve the job description revision presented by the superintendent. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 4.07, a resolution to waive the second reading of Board Policy 1.30 Title IX Sexual Harassment.
I move approval.
I'll second.
I guess we have to read it then. It's been moved by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Nakand, that we approve the resolution to waive the second reading of Board Policy 1.30 Title IX of Sexual Harassment.
Mr. President.
Any discussion by the board?
Mr. President.
Mr. Robichaud.
Yeah, I just want to know, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote not in favor of this, the resolution. I don't have a problem with the policy. I don't have a problem with the, the changing of the policy. I just think there's a reason the, the Board Policy 1.30 was created to have two readings for the, for the policy changes. And I just, I don't, I, I don't think this one, I don't see a reason why we have to not have two readings on this for public comment and scrutiny.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Any, any other discussion?
Mr. President, I think the reason for waiving this policy is because of this new Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy. It was due, I believe, in September, and we are out of compliance. And if we would go through the normal process, we would be even more out of compliance and possibly fined if, if we don't act upon this expediently.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. She's exactly right, as was explained to us, I think, at the committee meeting. So, any, any more discussion? Comments? There being none, please cast your vote. That motion carries unanimously.
No, 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 no.
Nope. I'm sorry. Did I miss one?
Six to one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Six to one, Mr. Robichaud, in a negative. Thank you for calling that out to me. Item 4.08, Policy 1.30 is Title IX Sexual Harassment. The U.S. Department of Education recently released its final rule under Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972, which prohibits discrimination on the basis of sex and education programs or activities received that receive federal financial assistance. The final rule regulations govern sexual harassment policies and require the board to adopt new Title IX Sexual Harassment Policy and procedure immediately. This item agenda was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, 2020, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. It recommended that we accept and adopt Board Policy 1.30, Title IX Sexual Harassment.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Oakland, seconded by Mr. Smith.
No, by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Smith.
What is it?
Oakland Nakand.
Oakland Smith.
Oakland Smith, that's what I thought. All right, gentlemen. Any discussion on this, on this item now? Did you get that Madam Secretary?
Got it.
She got it. Any other discussion on this particular item? Staff, superintendent? I think it was pretty clear in the, in the description. There being none, please cast your vote. This one passes unanimously. Item 4.09 is Bid Authorization Request for Lease Purchase School Buses.
Mr. President.
In a continued effort to up...
Oh, are you going to read?
I'm going to read it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Unless you'd like to read it. I mean, it's your committee.
No, it's, it's your meeting.
All right. In a continued effort to upgrade the parish-owned bus fleet, the Transportation Department is requesting authorization to solicit funds for the purpose of up to four school buses through a lease purchase agreement. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, 2020, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan. It's been recommended that we approve the bid authorization request for the purchase of four school buses.
Mr. President, I move to approve the bid authorization request for the purchase of, of two for school buses through the lease purchase agreement plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander and seconded by Mr. Suffering, that we authorize the lease purchase of four, up to four school buses. Any discussion? There being none, Superintendent? We all clear? Please cast your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Item 4.10 is the bid authorization, authorization request to purchase school buses. In a continued effort... Is that one right? Yeah. To upgrade the parish-owned bus fleet, the Transportation Department is requesting authorization to solicit bids for the purpose of two buses equipped transporting students with special needs. One bus equipped to transport head start students and two buses, regular buses, 65 passenger school buses. This agenda item was reviewed at the Transportation Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, 2020, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move to approve the bid authorization request for the purchase of two school bus, buses equipped to transport, to transport students with special needs. One bus equipped to transport head start students and two regular 65 passenger school buses.
Second.
It's been moved, Mr. Alexander, seconded by Mr. Robichaud, that we approve the bid authorization request for the purpose of two buses equipped with transport, to transport students with special needs. One bus equipped to transport head start students and two regular 65 passenger buses. Any discussion?
Yes, one.
Mr. Smith? Add to that, that it's a total of five buses because it's a little vague. And just want to add that to clear, just to add clarification.
Correct. It is five buses. Right.
I want to add that and, and, and add it to the...
Motion. To the minutes?
To the motions? A total of, a total of five buses? Okay. Any comment from the Transportation Committee? We got Mr. Alexander thinking. Any other discussion or comments from the board? There being none, please cast your, your vote. That motion passes unanimously. Well, Ms. Melinda's not, not here.
John Smith not present to vote.
It says John Smith not present?
It didn't come up on my machine.
He looks, he looks alive and well here.
Looks like you're here, John.
Just write me in.
He's alive and well. Thank you. This, this motion pairs, passes unanimously. All right. Item 4.11 is Retirement Accounts Investment Options. And let me see, let me get to that. Oh, Donna, here, okay. Seven different investment companies are available to the school board employees through the PanSer, the third-party administrator, to establish 403B or 457 Retirement Account. One of the investment company's security benefits has recently offered a new investment product referred to as a Workplace Retirement. This product offers comparable investment choices at a lower cost to the employees. Offering competitive and quality retirement products is a benefit to all our employees. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Order Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve transitioning security benefit investment accounts to the more cost-efficient product referred to as Workplace Retirement.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Suffering, seconded by Mr. Alexander, that we approve the transitioning security benefit investment accounts to a more cost-efficient product referred to as Workplace Retirement. Any discussion from the board?
I guess maybe I have...
Staff? Go ahead. Mr. Smith?
My question is, are we approving the transitioning? Or are we approving the allowing the company to offer that program? I don't think that the board is offering that program, so we're not transitioning, transitioning anything. I think that what we are approving is allowing the company to offer the program to our employees. So I, I, I'd just like to...
You want a clarification on that, Mr. Smith?
Well, I'd like to ask that the motion be made to stipulate specifically what we're, what we're doing, which is to authorize the company to offer that program to our employees.
Ms. Post, would you like to answer that question, please?
Security benefits offers certain investments for the 403B and 457 funds to be invested. And so the motion that is before you is to approve security benefits transitioning to a different product. It offers comparable investments at a lower cost for the employees.
And that is specifically what I am recommending because that was not the motion. The motion was to transition, and we are not transitioning. We are authorizing the... We are authorizing the company to...
To transition.
Offer a transition program.
Well, I think it says that in the motion, that we are, we are approve the transitioning of security benefit accounts to the benefit of our employees. It's kind of...
I know what...
The kind of words you're using?
I know what was written here, and I know what was said. What was written here and what was said were two different things. So you want to, if you want to read it the way it is, then I have no problem with it. But what was said was that, the motion was that we transition, and we are not transitioning.
So you're approving the transitioning?
Correct.
Well, I think that's what it says, we're approving transitioning security benefit.
That's not what was said, but if that is what we want to say, then I can go along with that. I have no problem with it.
I can reread it again. Mr. Sufferin, do you agree?
I know what you read.
We can modify the motion. Yeah, we can modify the motion.
How about Mr. Sufferin restate his motion?
Can I recite it?
Yes.
Okay. So to approve security benefit investments accounts' transition to the more cost-efficient product referred to as Workplace Retirement?
Correct.
Is that sufficient?
Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Sufferin, seconded by Mr. Nakand, that we do the transition of security benefit. You got it all, Madam Secretary? Okay. So any other discussion? Since that's been cleared up? If not, please cast your vote. That motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Accounts Payable for the month of August 2020. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made at the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of the public's fund under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, September 21st, 2020, and is aligned with goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Accounts Payable for the month of August 2020 in the total amount of $4,043,669.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Sufferin, seconded by Mr. Oakland, that we approve the Accounts Payable for the month of August 2020 as presented. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your vote. And that motion carries unanimously. Item number five is our closing items, and 5.0 runs the standing committee reports of the Board. Any committee chair would like to make a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee met this past Monday, September 21st. There were two items on the agenda. The first one was a bid request authorization to lease, or lease purchase agreement for up to four school buses. And the second item was a bid authorization request for the purchase of five school buses. And both of those items proceeded to the full Board meeting tonight, and both were approved. And I have another report, Mr. President, from the Head Start management team. We met yesterday, and some of the highlights of that meeting were, for the 2020-21 school year, our Head Start program was awarded $1,798,435. And this includes COLA Quality Improvement Award of $99,551 and a $218,823 award under the CARES Act. The COLA funds will be used for the hiring of a special ed teacher. Our program did not have one before. And also, we're going to hire one additional intervention para. This is an A and P position for the East Bank Head Start. We already had one at the Carver Early Learning Center. And some of the other highlights are we're going to increase our ESL services, increase mental health services, also purchase better and additional technology in the form of laptops for teachers, added computer and equipment for new teachers, Chromebooks for the students. The CARES Act award is going to be used for personal protection equipment for staff and students, individual student material items that were previously shared, and also tents for the interest of the, at the interest of the building to provide better spacing, social distancing. And that concludes my reports.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alexander. Anyone else?
Mr. President, the Finance and Audit Committee met on Monday, September 21st, and we covered two items. Both of those items came to the full Board and were covered just a moment ago. Those two items were the investment options for retirement accounts and the Accounts Payable for the month of August 2020. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Sufferin.
Mr. President, Curriculum Instruction Assessment met on Monday, September 21st, and we were presented with one item for discussion, and that item was school session calendar revision, which was brought to the full table tonight and approved, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakand.
Mr. President, the Personnel Committee met on Monday night and reviewed the four items that were presented at tonight's meeting. I want to thank the Board for your approval of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Mr. President, the Insurance Committee met Monday, and we discussed the two items that were on tonight's agenda that were approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robichaud. Technology Committee obviously did meet. And then the Legislative Committee. But anyway, before I move on, Mr. Robichaud brought up something Monday at our meeting, that the Legislature is going to a special session...
The 28th.
On the 28th. And I think the staff, superintendent, Board has to be very diligent about with the discussion, where the discussion will be headed. And I think we need to reach out to our legislative delegation and any concerns that we may have about any changes that are being made, especially when it affects our schoolchildren. So that's my comment. Thank you. And next is 5.02 is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 2020 high school athletic season has finally kicked off. Louisiana High School Athletic Association has provided specific guidance for competitions and practices. Volleyball has begun, and football will soon be underway with official games for both Destrean and Hanville on October 2nd. And actually, since I wrote this report, both cross-country and swimming have also started. Each school, in collaboration with district leadership, have submitted plans to the State Fire Marshal for spectator attendance. These plans are subject to change relative to the COVID-19 phase we operate in. Unfortunately, spectator seating will not be the same as the past. We must adhere to strict guidelines relative to social distancing, mask-wearing, and limited seating capacity. Plans will be communicated through the schools and posted to the district website once complete. We are prioritizing our student athletes and support groups for seating, followed by general attendance for our fans. Please check with school administration or their athletic department for details or questions. Once football season is underway, please remember that St. Charles Parish Public School has a bag protocol for safety purposes. Fans can carry see-through bags of any size, non-see-through bags, no larger than eight and a half by 11 inches, and small clutch bags with or without a handle or strap. The bag protocol will be in place for football, games, and designated athletic contests. The complete bag protocol and frequently asked questions are available on the district website. Also, tobacco and tobacco products are strictly prohibited on school grounds as stipulated in policy and state law. We appreciate your cooperation. Congratulations, first, to our Principal of the Year, St. Rose Elementary School Principal Shonda Harris, for being selected as this year's St. Charles Parish Public Schools Principal of the Year. She is an outstanding school leader, defined not only by her strong instructional leadership, but servant leadership that always places her faculty, staff, and students first. We look forward to seeing her represent St. Charles Parish in the next level of state competition. We were also recently notified that Ms. Angel Boujou, currently at Alamon's Elementary School, was selected as the elementary, the Louisiana State Elementary Teacher of the Year. So we look forward to recognizing her at next month's Board meeting. There will be no school for teachers and students, both on school campuses and virtually through e-learning on October 12th for fall break. The school system continues to evaluate current practices, make modifications where appropriate, and will keep you informed of any changes during Phase 3. The health and safety of our students and employees remain our top priorities, and we must continue minimizing potential risk and doing our part to reduce the positivity rate in our community and state. As outlined in our family reopening guide, school and instructional schedules will remain the same as they are now for Phases 2 and 3 to accommodate operating both school-based and virtual learning systems. We will continue following all safety measures outlined in the guide, such as disinfecting, maximizing social distancing, wearing face coverings, monitoring symptoms, and maintaining static groups to the greatest extent possible. Although bus capacity increases to 75%, we will not make adjustments to bus routes currently established in case we return to Phase 2. We will use the additional capacity where necessary to address challenges and other transportation services. Additionally, we are actively pursuing guidance from state and health officials relative to indoor and outdoor performance venues for our arts programs. Thank you again for your patience, support, and understanding. We're excited to safely embrace, or safely embrace, the new opportunities available in Phase 3 and appreciate the opportunity to serve you and your children. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. In regards to the arts program, we still have not received any guidance from the Attorney General on, we're protected, like we all with athletics, that if we do have a performance, that the school system will be, can be sued for...
So we have received additional guidance. Unfortunately, the guidance isn't quite as, what you would consider as lax as it is for athletics. The CDC and Louisiana Department of Health consider the arts, some of the arts and the performances of the arts to be potentially super-spreeder events if held indoors. We're all looking at opportunities to hold performances outdoors and outdoor venues, and our schools are really reimagining opportunities for the arts programs, practicing outdoors and such. But that also comes with additional stipulations. So we'll still have to operate with a 50-person group capacity based on current Fire Marshal guidelines.
All right, thank you, Superintendent. Before I call a meeting to adjourn, I'd like to announce to the Board that after speaking to all of you about the October Board Retreat, it was decided that we would cancel that and move it to the first quarter of 2021. And so our next discussion is going to be, do we want to stay at forward, or do we want to make some changes? So that'll be up for discussion, so... Mr. Robichaud?
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Robichaud, second amendment by Mr. Nakand, that we adjourn? Any discussion? That motion carries. Thank you, and good night to everyone.